I go to Parkdale High School and I'm a member of Lyrical Storm. And I'm going to do a poem entitled, "The Pursuit of Education." Oh, and I'm a freshman. I plan to go to college one day. I plan to excel at all the things people told me I wouldn't be capable of doing. I plan to prove them wrong. My brilliance will beget knowledge and provoke my intelligence to withstand ignorance. I have a voice which holds meaning to the problems we face today. I hold the key to the place. We all must go to find something great to feel as though we've accomplished something great. Capture my mind and follow me into the light of greatness. Let me show you the way so that we all must succeed when I grow up. I want to be an entrepreneur. I want a major in music production and minor in business. I plan to start a program which teams find themselves through the arts. When I grow up, I want to make a difference in the lives of others where no child should ever be left behind.
Mi nombre es Ingrid Paz y he estado asistiendo a la escuela Parkdale durante los últimos tres años. En un momento, tengo que admitir que no me imaginaba estar aquí. De hecho, tampoco pensé que lo lograría ser lo que estoy diciendo ahorita. Afortunadamente, las cosas comenzaron a cambiar para mí. Porque a través de mis luchas, mis caídas, y los encuentros, mis maestros y administradores todavía me ayudaban. Gracias a sus palabras de sabeduría, has sido capaz de madurar y seguir haciéndolo con ambición para agradarme. Han absolutamente cambiado mi manera de pensar. A veces el cambio es necesario. Ahora lo sé. También sé que puedo lograr cualquier cosa y superar en cualquier cosa. Pero ahora, sin más preámbulos, quiero darle la bienvenida a este evento de hoy. No nude en estar al día sobre www.pgcps.org para reuniones y eventos. Y ahora podemos continuar. Gracias.
Well, now I'm going to translate for you guys. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ingrid Paz and I've been attending Parkdale High School for the past three years, making me a proud junior. At first, I have to admit, I didn't exactly picture myself before you all. In fact, I didn't even think I'd make it this far. Fortunately, things began changing for me because throughout my struggles, downfalls, and encounters, my teachers and administrators still pushed me to do better. They've inspired me to pick myself up and to keep attempting to fulfill my dreams. I'm so thankful for the words of wisdom they have given me. I was able to mature and continue to do so as I steam to graduate. They've absolutely changed my perspective of things for the better. Sometimes change is necessary. I now know that. I also now know that I can accomplish anything and overcome anything because all it takes is little courage and a lot of determination. But now, without further ado, I want to welcome you to this year's Prince George's County Board of Education meeting for Thursday, April 2006... I mean, apologize. April 26, 2012. Please feel free to keep updated on www.pgcps.org for upcoming board meetings and events. And now, the April 26 Board of Education meeting will begin. Thank you.
Welcome to the Prince George's County Board of Education meeting for April 26, 2012. Before I begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. Our student board member Faith Jackson will not be in attendance this evening. She's actually visiting Princeton University for the Admitted Students Weekend. And that's a weekend that gives students the opportunity to tour the campus, meet different professors, and experience the college life and ask different questions. So that's where Faith Jackson is this evening. I want to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Felton and Ms. Paz for their introduction of tonight's board meeting. And as always, we want to acknowledge our students who have struggled and have proven to us time and time again that when we challenge them, they will meet the challenge. I always also think that we have to take the opportunity to tell more about our story. And the best way to tell about our story is through our students. Our students continue to demonstrate that they do well in Prince George's County Public Schools, and they continue to demonstrate that as long as we give them the challenge, they'll meet it. Congratulations, Ms. Paz and Ms. Felton, for your work. And we wish you the best in your continued studies in Prince George's County Public Schools. I also want to take a moment to introduce Reed Smith. Are you here? Mr. Smith is a school board fellow, and he is working with our board member, Ms. Amber Waller. Is Ms. Summer Wen here? We also have Mark Gertjes. Are you here? Did I say that right? Close enough. Okay. Thank you. So, the School Board Fellows Program is a board fellows program is part of Leadership for Educational Equity. It's a program that's designed to assist Teach For America alumni to attain leadership positions in education and other fields. School Board Fellows work with a member of the Board of Education to learn about the responsibilities of the board, to complete... They have to complete a project, and they also have to attend meetings. And at the end of their session, they do an overview. Generally, they pick a topic and we work with them on that topic. And I've found in the past that it's been very helpful in some of our work. So, welcome and thank you for attending tonight's board meeting. At this time, Ms. Boston, would you please lead us in the board prayer and Pledge of Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Dent, call roll, please.
Mr. Armwood.
Present.
Mrs. Beck.
Present.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Mr. Burrows.
Present.
Ms. Ubanks.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Waller.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Higgins.
Present.
Ms. Jacobs.
Here. Thank you. Colleagues, at this time, may I have a motion to adopt the April 26, 2012 board meeting agenda?
So move.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Boston. Thank you, Ms. Ubanks. We're probably moving second that we adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting, April 26, 2012. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, motion passed. Colleagues may have a motion to adopt the... To approve the April 12, 2012 system oversight meeting minutes.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Waller.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ubanks. Just noted for the record that the approval of the minutes would be based on... We found one administrative matter, which was a typo, so that typos will be corrected in the minutes. So noted. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections, abstentions? Saying none, the motion passed. This time, we'll have a news break. It's entitled, "A Splash of Class."
I got first place.
First place?
Yes, I got first place, and I'm nine years old.
What's your name?
Devon Marks, and I'm sure my mom will be really proud.
Mom's pride and that of the whole county was guaranteed as almost 100 challenged youngsters participated recently in the 34th Annual Special Olympic Swim Meet at the Sports and Learning Complex in Landover. For as the students swam, some with floats and some without, the sheer determination to do their best brought mostly smiles to their faces and lots of joy to everyone else who was watching. And you don't just do this, you play softball and bocce. You do it all.
Yeah.
What's your favorite sport?
My favorite sport is bowling.
Really?
Yes.
She's an awesome athlete. She's involved with all sports. She's in all sports. I mean, we're so proud of her at Fairmont Heights. We love her.
With special education department staff, parents, and student volunteers from Bowie High School there to encourage as much as to keep records, and the county police handing out medals, the young swimmers got the approval they richly deserved. Let me see your medal. What are you going to do with your medal?
I'm going to stash it with the rest of my trophies and medals that I earn.
So you have a lot of them at home?
Yeah.
Wow, so you're a real athlete.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one is from a contest, and the other ones, most of them are from school. But they're all from what I can do.
What do you like about swimming?
That I get first place, and I do my best all the time.
We can't keep up with her sometimes. She's on the go constantly. But we do everything to make sure she's at an event like this, that she does do her homework, a lot of work in there. But it's all about the kid and all about getting the most out of what God gives us.
Did you ever swim against your dad?
No, I would never do that.
Retired schools employee Ron List, who's been working the meet for 32 years, knows that while medals are nice and that mom's hugs are even better, it's the love of the crowd that often makes the biggest splash of all. How do they train for this?
We have about four or five clinics during the year in this pool, so it helps them adjust from a school pool to this pool at, you know, the PG Learning Center. And they also have... Sometimes they can get to go with their class to the different centers.
And everyone, it seems, gets some kind of recognition here today.
Everybody. Everybody gets recognition. That's what they love. They'd rather probably have that than the medals and ribbons.
For channels 96 and 38, this is Dave Zerrin reporting.
Congratulations to those students. Students from Port Towns Elementary, William Worth Middle, Blainsburg High School, they all won several top awards at a recent National Communications Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Challenge in Houston, Texas. The National CSTEM Challenge is designed to engage elementary, middle, and high school students through a project that allows them to work collaboratively. The Prince George's County Public School teams competed in the following categories: Building and programming robots to solve environmental challenges; Designing and painting murals to tell folktales through artistry; Using recycled materials to build structures and sculptures; Using geographic information systems to design digital maps; Writing original stories to be included in an originally engineered pop-up book; Investigating a green solution to an environmental challenge and then building a model that uses recycled products. The Prince George's County Public School feeder pattern team representing Blainsburg took first place in the Quiz Bowl competition, green competition, and mural competition. The team received second-place awards in the GIS competition and in total points. The team was also reached semifinals in the robotics competition and placed fourth in creative writing. This was the team's third year participating in this competition. Deja Grant recently received the 2012 She Matters Achievement Award. She Matters is a Baltimore-based nonprofit girl empowerment group. Grant is a fifth-grade honor roll student at Landover's Thomas G. Pullen K-8 Creative and Performing Arts School, and she's also a member of the Girl Scouts of America, a dance group called Natural Beauty, and an athlete who competed in the USA Track and Field National Junior Olympic Track and Field Championships in 2011, where she placed fourth in the triathlon and fifth in the high jump. Great job, Deja. Prince George's County Public Schools hosts its 26th Science Bowl Championships for middle and elementary schools at Bonnie John's Educational Media Center in Landover. Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School and University Park Elementary Schools rose in the competition as the champions. The winner, Martin Luther King Jr. Team coached by Elizabeth Butler, included Liam Greaves, Zachary Landau, Zach Reed, and alternates Anne Therese Greaves, Erin McGlovan, and Kyle Tulio. Martin Luther King Jr. Defeated Stephen Decatur to take its first title since 2005. The winning University Park Team coached by Gio Favero included Charlie Dawson, Madeline Wanaburger, Suray Pacahenti, and alternates Luis Catacolos, Vivian Tran, and Alexis Arneson. University Park Elementary School defeated Cora Rice Elementary to win its fifth title. University Park has now won more Science Bowl Elementary Championships than any other school in the history of the competition. The Science Bowl is the Prince George's County Interscholastic Science Literacy Competition that tests student knowledge in six categories: Green Things, Zoo Parade, Body Systems, Let's Get Physical, Science Potpourri, and Dateline Science. The Science Bowl started in 1986 as a way to give elementary and middle school students a chance to demonstrate their science knowledge in academic competition. Congratulations to University Park and Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School. Gerald Williams, a junior at Laurel High School, was one of 100 students that used some of their required service learning credits to make a dent in hunger in the area. A dinner was hosted on April 20, dubbed Empty Bowls, to raise money for Laurel Soup Kitchen. Rebecca Adams, a special education teacher and service learning coordinator at Laurel High School, recruited ceramic students to make about 500 bowls, which was given to attendees at the dinner at a cost of $10 to remind them that there are others in the area who go hungry. Williams, who made about 10 bowls in ceramics last class over last month, said that the work paid off and they raised funds for the hungry. Laurel High School raised approximately $1,043 to be donated to the food bank in Laurel. Because the school received a grant from Disney, Friends for Change, $1,000, they did not have any overhead. All proceeds were donated. A moment of silence, please, for the following. Amure Perkins, first grade student at James Rider Randall School. Thank you for that moment of silence. Upcoming events, we still encourage you to sign up for automatic alerts to come to your email or your cell phone. Be careful to select which ones because I get about, I don't know, 20 in 15 minutes. It's a lot. So, sign up for the ones that you know you want to get the alerts for, but it really is a good thing to keep you up to date on events. With regard to board meetings for the month of May, May 17, we have a board meeting here at Sasser. May 21, we have a board awards program at 6:30. Watch the website for locations. June 14, we have a board meeting. June 20, we have a CIP and Finance Audit and Budget Meeting. And June 28, we have another board meeting. If you wish to speak, please register two and a half hours prior to the time that's designated for the meeting. And at this time, I yield to the superintendent for report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to members of the board and to our viewing public and individuals who are here with us this evening. We're continuing to keep a close eye on our state lawmakers to resolve the budget impasse. Governor O'Malley indicated earlier this week that a special session would likely be convened in mid-May to address this issue. We are in contact with our lawmakers and encourage our stakeholders, parents, business leaders, community, all our staffs, to reach out to their representatives emphasizing potential harm to our classrooms, curriculum, and students. Please spread the message that every dollar counts when it comes to education, as it is the gateway to our children's future. Last night, we had the opportunity to honor our hardworking, dedicated, second-to-none teacher corps. Valley View Elementary Teacher Sherrell Stagg is this year's Teacher of the Year. Ms. Stagg has spent her entire career in our system, starting at Forest Heights Elementary in 2004. She has worked at Valley View since 2009, where she is a special education resource teacher and talented and gifted general education teacher. Let us also take a moment to express our appreciation for outgoing Teacher of the Year, Baden Elementary, Rashana Bama, and congratulate all of this year's nominees on their outstanding achievements. It is always challenging to narrow down just one Teacher of the Year. We know that in the eyes of our students, families, and colleagues, there are many educators who deserve this honor. We know that Ms. Stagg will represent our county wonderfully over the next year and wish her the best of luck in bringing the Maryland Teacher of the Year Award home to our county. I'd also like to acknowledge a number of our students who will be honored on Sunday as Carson Scholars. The Carson Scholars Fund was founded by world-renowned pediatric neurosurgeon Dr. Benjamin Carson and his wife Candy. To recognize high-achieving students in grades four through 11 who demonstrate outstanding academic achievement and humanitarian qualities, students receive a $1,000 award. Please join me in congratulating the following students: Sidney Bechtin, a fifth grader at Akakeak Academy; Clara Mudd; and William Rosenberg, eighth graders at Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School from Eleanor Roosevelt High School; Kalib Cook; Arianna Cooper; Vanessa Deborah; and Katheen Sundar; Aaron Ellington, a fifth grader at Melwood Elementary; Jordana Frazier from the Academy of Health and Sciences at the Community College; and Anthony Turner, Jr., an eighth grader at Stephen Decatur Middle School. Next week, we will celebrate the completion of the Student Built House Project in Clinton through the Foundation for Applied Construction Technology for Students. Since the inception of this program nearly 30 years ago, our students have helped build 37 homes with sales exceeding $6.9 million. This is how we help to provide real-world learning through innovative partnerships to prepare our students for life beyond high school. Madam Chair, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, we're at the point of our agenda for the legislative update. We do not have registered speakers for this particular item. I asked Mr. Luci if he would come forward and provide the board information on this past session.
And what a session it was. Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the Board of Education for Prince George's County. On the evening of April 9, was the last night of the General Assembly session, things were looking pretty good for education, and then all of a sudden, it was a... A rude awakening when the smoke settled. There were five pieces of legislation that made up the budget package. One was the operating budget. That passed, and in its normal place, it fully funded the Bridge Through Excellence school funding. More about that soon. The second part was the operating budget, which had $370 million for school construction, a much higher number than in previous years. The third part was the Maintenance of Effort Reform Law, which was signed on April 10. It's an emergency law, so it's now the law of the state. A very, very landmark, significant law that had more impact in other counties than ours, but you never know in the future. It says that if a county does not meet its obligation to meet Maintenance of Effort and does not ask for a waiver, that the state controllers to intercept its income tax proceeds and deliver those funds to the Board of Education. A very sweeping law. Unfortunately, it's not a question with this county executive with his budget, but it's a very, very meaningful protections for school systems all throughout the state. Then there's the other two pieces of the package that did not pass. One was called the Budget Reconciliation and Financing Act. In there was the part that talked about the pension shift, which was going to happen over four years: 50% the first year, 65% the second year, 85% the third year, and 100% the fourth year. That did not pass. So, everyone says, "What great news, the pension shift didn't happen." Let me tell you, then the fifth bill was about... It had tax increases, increases in tobacco products, and then primarily increases in income tax for folks. And that bill did not pass either. Now, the budget said, "If those two bills don't pass, that's when this so-called doomsday budget kicks in." And the doomsday budget had a disproportionate effect on public education, K through 12, as well as state higher education facilities. Primarily, what hurt... What hit Prince George's County the hardest is in two areas. It would eliminate the Geographic Cost of Education Index, which was a supplement put in the Bridge to Excellence funding 10 years ago to make sure that areas with higher costs get paid, have higher state funds for education. And the other thing would lower the foundation grant amount. Those two together would be a hit to the public schools of some $50 million. Now, as you've probably heard in the press, the three leaders of Maryland, the President of the Senate, Speaker of the House, and Governor of Maryland met earlier this week. And it looks like there's going to be a special session called to fix this in the week of May 14. Probably committees will meet on May 14, and then they'll go into the floor session on May 15. And so, cautiously optimistic that the doomsday budget will go away. So, that's the budget situation. There were, as you know, many, many bills that you took positions on. Many of them were opposed because they were intruded on local board authority. Most of those did not pass. There were several bills that did pass, and we have attached to board docs both the report of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, as well as the Department of Legislative Services that lists all the bills that passed. I want to highlight three of them. One is a bill that was sponsored by the Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate, so it actually passed... The sponsors helped pass it, on reestablishing core curriculum requirements for social studies. And it has... And enumerates how that's going to be done. And that was a bill that the board supported. Secondly, was a bill that I worked on quite extensively with Dr. Aubergast regarding approval of online curriculum for school systems. And the legislation went through several iterations and several different directions. Each time it was revised, it actually got better for the school system. And it's surely one of the few times that the legislature passed a bill that actually enhanced a school board's power as opposed to trying to whittle away at that. So, that was very significant legislation. It's not been signed yet, but it's an emergency bill, so that when it is signed, it'll take effect immediately. And then the third major piece of legislation, which I think everyone was surprised when it passed, but it did pass, is to raise the compulsory age of education, phasing it in from 15 to 17 over the next four years. And I mean, that is something in principle which this board has supported for many years. The big question is, in four years, when the cost comes to Prince George's County, it will mean at least $35 million more from the state and an unknown amount from the county. And that's the same year that the pension shift, if that goes through, will be fully funded. I mean, fully unfunded is really the way to put it. So, there's four years to plan for that, and it is a very meaningful thing, I believe, that we all believe for students, but it's a four-year phase. And finally, there were four bills that passed that were Prince George's County-specific legislation. Two of them were introduced at the request of the Board of Education. One says that when you change one of those drug-free school zone signs, or you put up a new one, it has to have the phone number for Prince George's Crime Solvers, which is a great thing, for people to report it if they see any kind of drug or other kind of trafficking going on. The second one adds Prince George's County to the lists of school districts that are allowed to have one or more year-round schools. And that's just the authority. It's not a mandate. It's just, again, another authority-enhancing legislation passed by the General Assembly. Two other bills which the board wasn't so wild about, but were amended to make it a little more palable. One was to amend last year's legislation on transparency to require that budget information be available on a school-by-school basis, and the board's position was... be available on a school-by-school basis, and the board's position was, "That's fine, but it's an unfunded mandate, why don't you fund the mandate?" And they did not fund the mandate, but they did delay the effective date by one year, so it won't take effect until 2013. The other legislation had to do with recycling, which is already beginning in the school system. And the one thing that made that legislation more palatable was taking out the part that the department had to come up with the way how that was going to be financed, which is a good thing, because right now, there'll be grants from the private sector, as well as help from the county government, and it would not be right to have that responsibility on the, on the school district. So those are the four local bills that passed that are on the governor's desk. The governor will be signing or not signing or vetoing all these bills by the end of the month. Right now, he's not signing a whole heck of a lot of bills till he sees what happens with the, the budget situation, because he doesn't want to sign any kind of bill that has any kind of fiscal impact at all, until he knows that the, the doomsday budget has been diffused. So it was a very unusual session, assuming they come back in special session and fix that. It was on the whole a successful session, the pension shift could have been much worse, and there were set-offs to, given to the county to extra grants in the form of disparity grants to make up for much of that. But all that, but for those that happened, that has, the doomsday budget has to be corrected. The only other thing that happened that was interesting, but not really ever too likely, was the Senate passed the Gaming Bill, and in there, it funded net taxable income, and it had extra grants for Montgomery County to make up for its losses from net taxable income, but the House wasn't hearing anything of, any of that, and so that was just more of a symbolic thing, I think. So that's all that I have. I'd be glad to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Luci, for that report. Keep us updated on what goes on with the session, obviously. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Luci, I sent a series of questions to our Chief Financial Officer and to Dr. Height. I wish to ask you just a couple of them. In light of the fact that we really have no education budget as such, and doomsday is lurking, I'd like to know from you, Senate Bill 178 and House Bill 617, which is about the domicile, the having less certification about proof of where you are, is that, even though we don't have the budget, the doomsday budget, that would still go into effect? Because clearly, with Prince George's County, I foresee, and I'm waiting for a report from the superintendent, but not having the stringent residency documentation, I think we're going to see a real change in numbers, and if not that, at least where students are, are going to school, which is a money issue, because it could include transportation. Do you see that that's going to be impacted by not passing this school budget? And the other is the Senate Bill 605 and House Bill 757, which is about the requirement now of children who are under the supervision of the Department of Justice, Social Services, and other mandated oversight services. They have to bear the cost of transporting those children. Now, is that, I'm trying to figure out, is that going to be funded through the education law, or is it going to be funded through another process that not having the budget is, is going to be impacted? I'm not sure. Do you know?
I, I don't know, but I do know that the State Budget Secretary is scrubbing all bills that passed the legislature for any possible fiscal impact. So it might be a good idea for us to contact her and say, "Look at these two," because she does not want to have any legislation with fiscal impact passing, as long as the doomsday budget is going to be in place.
That, that would be very helpful, because I am, in these times, we just, you know, if this, we don't have a special session to get us into a real budget. I am really concerned, and I'm not suggesting that our superintendent is not, he's going to be responding to us, but I wondered if you had any additional information? Because clearly, young people who are under the Department of Justice, et cetera, irrespective of where they live, being able to go to the school, I guess, that they last attended, is a transportation issue. We could truly use the money to help transport those children, which is what I'm sure the way it's set up to do, because obviously, they won't have the, they won't actually transport. It'll probably go through our transportation system, but we would be, I think we would be reimbursed, at least I would hope so. So I'm really concerned about doomsday budget. Is that off the table? And obviously, changing the domicile paperwork, lesser proof, which could seriously impact us.
I will reach out to Mr. Stansky tomorrow.
Thank you. I don't know that they're ready, because I sent a whole host of questions, and, and, but I just thought maybe you could help steer where they might begin to address that, because it, it is huge. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Dr. Height?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Johnson, to your, to your question, to both questions, actually, and as Mr. Luci was explaining the process, I hit the send button on the responses to all of the board for the questions that you submitted. But with Senate Bill 178 and House Bill 617, specifically the domicile requirement, that law is not intended to lessen the documentation, but it is for, the bill is designed to address systems that they felt have been, where they've been more difficult to enroll a child for an individual who had informal guardianship. And so it's to alleviate that part, and so that school systems are not able to keep people from enrolling until they can bring all of that additional proof, but it still requires the documentation, it just doesn't require it at the time that the individual is attempting to enroll. So the purpose of the bill is really to get students enrolled in schools as quickly as possible, and then the documentation should follow.
And therefore, the oversight of that at our registrars at our schools incumbent upon them to be very diligent, that as they put it in the pending file, the pending file does not become permanent?
That's correct.
Okay, fine.
That's correct.
And, and you all are ready and prepared to, to do that guidance?
This is inside of our pupil accounting and, and inside of that office, and so they will have to make some adjustments and establish some procedures for our registrars. The other is the Senate Bill 605, I think it was 605, and House Bill 757. That's the bill about the juvenile services. Essentially, juvenile services will bill us the tuition. We pay them the tuition, and they work out the transportation, so we don't have that information, but that is information that is contained at juvenile services. The only documentation that we get from them are the records to support the tuition requests.
Thank you, Dr. Height, for that explanation. I see no other questions from colleagues. Mr. Luci?
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Thank you. All right, colleagues, at this time, I'm going to yield back to Dr. Height for introduction of our discussion item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, the discussion item are items around our academic program, specifically as relates to reading in the early grades, and then we want to provide the board with a report with, with regard to benchmarks about student performance at the middle school grades. And so with that, I'm going to yield to our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Aubregas, to walk us through this presentation.
Good evening. We're actually going to have two presenters this evening. Dr. Gladys White-Hud, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will present the early reading and benchmark data, and then we're going to close with our reforms in middle school, and that will be with Mrs. Helen Coley, Associate Superintendent for Region 2. So, Dr. White-Hud.
Okay. Good evening. We'll begin. The first thing we want to highlight is all of the work that we've been doing with early literacy, beginning with our pre-K data. As you can see, we've been trending steadily upward over the years. This year, we took a little slight dip, but you can see we're still headed in the right direction. The line that's by itself, of course, represents our children with special disabilities, and of course, we are working to close that gap, so it's seamless between the line for all children and for our children with disabilities. We're going to continue to work with our curriculum and provide professional development to staff. As you can see, we took a slide from our PMAP data with our push to get our kindergarten students reading and on grade level. You will see that our target for the year was 89%, and at this point in time, we are now 91% well over our target, and our students are trending toward reading well above grade level. This just shows some of the data for our first and our second grade students, and you can see to date, we are still trending toward our targets. We will collect data again at the end of the year. Behind our early literacy initiative, we have our 24-member elementary literacy support team that does reading recovery and supports teachers with balanced literacy. And you'll see that we also have our intervention support, and we've been focused on training on guided reading and small group instruction in classrooms. And you can see this is helping us to provide strategies to our teachers and to assist our students in developing their foundational skills. Some of the assessment tools that we've been using to track the progress of our students, you see, we use letter identification, word tests, we look at the emergent literacy behaviors, and you can see we use our, our development reading assessments to determine the level our students are reading on, and also our scholastic reading inventory is one of our most common assessments. And so we're going to continue our professional development, training our early literacy teachers with strategies for our Common Core, and continuing to give them the skills and resources needed to help our students make progress. The next few slides, I just want to show you some of the progress that we are making. You can see for reading for grades three through eight, that we've had increases across the board. And these increases, if you look at the slides, we have students moving more toward advanced, and that's the trend that you, you want to see. You would like to see proficiency decreasing and advanced increasing. On this slide, we just wanted to show you some data from the many strategies that we've used over the years for our reading programs, America's Choice, and the middle is our regular comprehensive program and toolkit. So you can see if schools stick to the strategies, we are making gains. This shows you our data on our scholastic reading inventory for some of the upper grades, and as you can see, from 2011 to 2012, our students are continuing to make progress. On this slide, we did a little breakdown in reading by subgroups, looking at our ESOL students and our special ed, and you can see we, we have some increases, some successes, but we are still working on our strategies to help our students gain across the board. On this slide, we compared our Fast 1, Fast 2, looking at the BCR, and the BCR is where our students are writing, and even though we're beginning to implement a full writing program, this just gives us a snapshot of how our students are making progress. So you can see we've had gains. We want them to all be at threes, but at the threes and twos, we've had gains, and so we have less of the zeros and ones, where the students write little or no responses. And of course, here, looking at our ESOL and our special ed students, you can see that, you know, we have some gains for, across the, the boys, some for special ed and some for ESOL, and we are continuing to work on our strategies for our subgroup areas. This is just a little overview of the writing responses at the middle school level. We aren't making quite as much progress, but we continue to work with our teachers on giving our students strategies. And now, looking at mathematics, you'll see that we haven't been quite as successful. We've been trending upward for the past few years, but this year, we, we took a little dip, and if you look at grade five, that was our worst decline, and we do know that at grade five, we did a new adoption to Common Core, and so we feel that might have been part of the, our teachers' adjustment to using those resources. And this just shows you the breakdown and the gains and some decreases for our special ed and our ESOL students. As you can see, for our mod assessments in grade four, our students took almost a 15-point gain in their assessments, and we continue to struggle with our special ed and our ESOL students and learning strategies to help them grow. When we tried to figure out what was going on in mathematics and why we had so many decreases, we started to look at the questions, to sort of do an item analysis, and we picked out this question as an example. This is a sample item that would also appear on MSA, but we feel that we, what we've got to do is go back and give our teachers strategies for helping students to break down this problem. They were supposed to use the grid to assist them to find the perimeter of the entire larger figure, and we think that some students just counted the size, even though they were unequal and got 20, some used the smaller grid, but you, you can see that very, very few of our students really aimed at the right answer. The answers are dispersed across for the incorrect responses to this problem. So we have our work cut out for us. And then, of course, this just gives you a little snapshot of science, and we are continuing to trend upward for our grade eight, for all students, including our ESOL and special ed. And so, you know, looking at grade five, we took a slight dip for all students and for our ESOL students, but special ed held the trend. For read English Language Arts for the high school assessment, you can see that we have plus gains across the board. We have a partnership with the Institute for Learning where we concentrate on disciplinary literacy, and this has really contributed to our students making strides. And in science, you can see that for the HSA Biology Fast Assessments, that we are continuing to make gains across the board. Now, for HSA Algebra, as with all of our other math data, we did take a decline, and so we have been analyzing our fast assessments and looking at our professional development strategies that we are going to use with our teachers. So here, we just wanted to give you a quick overview of the, the funds from our Title II Grant that we've been using to try and support our professional development of teachers, and you can see that, you know, we still spent a nice amount on mathematics, and of course, Read English Language Arts as well, we spent the bulk of the funds. So moving forward, we know that we have to shore up as we get ready for the Common Core, so we are going to look at professional development for teachers, looking at the strategies that they're using in the classroom, examining the extensions, and of course, establishing more rigor in the classroom. We have several partnerships. One is with the University of Maryland in Mathematics, and we just received a grant where our elementary teachers can earn six hours of content and pedagogic instruction, and this, of course, will increase their skills and capacity in the classroom. We also have a partnership that's helping us to train our middle school teachers. So as we identify problems and concerns, we are reaching out to our partners for help and support. And so in addition to that, we are going to continue our focus groups where teachers can come out, and we can walk through lessons, give them strategies, ideas for the lesson, continue to monitor the data, and of course, our little show for our elementary And of course, our little show for our elementary, middle school students count on us. We're going to continue that to help with the homework. And of course, we will continue developing our partnerships to help us work with our students. And in fact, this year, we have ramped up our partnership for ESOL students. All right. And Ms. Coler will now do middle school reform.
Good evening. Our middle school reform, which ultimately began during the last school year, was a result of our performance data from our students, was a result of the need to change the perceptions of our middle schools, and as a result of conversations between and amongst our administrators and our students. As a result of last year's need for reform, it entailed principals being engaged in book study opportunities where they were learning about a better understanding of the middle school child and of the adolescent. There were more opportunities last school year for our principals, our teachers to engage in conversations around data and opportunities for them to observe instructional practices at both elementary and middle school. We were seeing that in many instances, our elementary school students were not continuing with the amount of success that we would ultimately like for them to have as they matriculated to middle school. Therefore, we developed partnerships between our elementary and middle schools, and the data is showing improvement. This year, we've added another layer to last year's work. And the new layer to last year's work and the need and soon-to-be Common Core implementation is around looking at it through the lens of what these practices, instructional practices will look like with respect to the standards themselves, what the practice, what the work will look like in the classroom, and what it will look like for our students as well. Recently, we began training opportunities, professional development opportunities for our middle school administrators. Feedback that has been received from them indicates to us that we are truly on the right path. We have as well provided after-school opportunities for our teachers around the Common Core, around what it will look like through the lens of the standards, the practice, and the learner, and ensuring that there is a true alignment. Understanding the adolescent behavior, that is a question that comes up often. What happens to the student after they've left elementary school, where they're in environments where many perceive it to be more nurturing? But they're the same students, they're just bigger in stature, but their needs remain to be the same. Through this text that I shared with you moments ago from the National Middle School Association, there are characteristics of what the opportunities that exist in our middle schools should look like for our students. The characteristics themselves are around instructional practices, what the leadership should look like within the school, and ultimately, what the culture and community should look like with respect to the needs of the students. In all of our schools, K through twelve, my colleagues, associate superintendents, and I are working rigorously on a K through twelve perspective in terms of a continuum of this work for our students. This year as well, we provided an opportunity for our high school administrators to meet with our middle school administrators. And our middle school administrators are meeting with our elementary school administrators. So we're not necessarily working in silos and in separate entities, but we're ultimately working collectively from K through twelve. We recognize the need for there to be infrastructures that will be in support of this work. And the infrastructures that are current are included on this slide here. Collaborative partners, using the PMAP process as a means for dissecting and using data to make better and more informed instructional decisions for our students. This year, our principals as well have been engaged in opportunities with an outside consultant, showing us how the work should look as we provide for interventions and enrichment opportunities for our students that is supported through the instructional schedule. Each school's vision should be in support of a college and career-going climate. We have avid in some of our schools, but we have avid practices that are expected in all of our schools. Avid practices are those practices that prepare our students through Cornell notes, taking notes, better study skills, being better prepared for the next level, and being better organized. PBIS training occurred for our middle school principals during last summer. So our middle schools are, in fact, PBIS schools. And of course, we, as associate superintendents, continue to look at the work from the perspective of pockets of excellence. When in fact, we see that schools are doing things well, we provide an opportunity for their partners from either elementary, middle, or high to come and actually observe those practices. So that too helps us in ensuring the fidelity and continuum of the K through twelve instructional program. We also recognize the need that everybody is apprised to the work and that everybody is knowledgeable about where we're planning to go. And in doing so, we recognize the need for us to continue to engage all stakeholders. This year, our middle school principals have been asked to go and to visit and to participate in the PTA meetings at our elementary schools so that they have a, the parents of the elementary school students have a face that they can relate to, that they are apprised to and informed of their practices and what the transition will look like. Our business partners are assisting us, our community partnerships. And ultimately, we recognize that we have to all be on the same page with regard to overall improvement in our instructional program for our students. So quite frankly, I feel that we're really on our way. We've shown it in the data for overall improvement in our middle schools. So that's a result of our middle school reform. Thank you.
Dr. Hyatt, before we get to questions, did you have anything you wanted to add, or Dr. Arbogast?
No, we are ready to entertain any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you, and thank you both for the presentation. This is a topic, obviously, of much consideration and concern for the community. So I will start with Ms. Boston.
Looking at Slide one on the early childhood, there seems to be such a big difference and a really decline from last year, look like it's 2011 to 2012 on the kids with disability. What do you contribute that decline to? I mean, is it because of, well, it looks like these are five-year-olds. So I don't see where the change in the pre-K half-a-day should have affected that. So what do you contribute that decline in?
So I think the, if you look at the total slope, we actually need to go to Slide three. If you look at the total slope, look at the slope between 2010 and 2011. And we went from the seventy-one percent to the eighty-one percent, which really was unprecedented growth. The drop from eighty-one to seventy-nine for the non-disabled peers and from seventy-nine to seventy-seven is really a very modest drop. I'm not particularly concerned about that.
I'm sorry, I thought the blue line was the line for the disabled, the kid that's special.
So the bottom line is the kids with disability. The middle line are disabled and non-disabled together. And then, the orange line are the non-disabled students. So you'll notice that each one dropped about two percent. And I'm not particularly concerned about that because the year before, the gain was so large. So that when we're testing a great number of students, I don't see a one or two percent drop or increase as pretty significant. You are absolutely correct. The change in pre-K had nothing to do with this data because these are kids who are entering kindergarten. So it was, it reflects their learning prior to September. So.
But then, my question is, if then, if we have transferred to the pre-, you know, the half-a-day, then I foresee this being even a lot lower coming to next year.
We're pretty worried about that, too.
So what plans are we, do we, have the system put in place to try to?
What we had to do is, we actually had to retrain the pre-K teachers because they were used to doing a full-day curriculum and a full day. So that means you had to collapse and kind of pay attention to the things that were really important, which were reading, literacy, and math literacy. It'll be very interesting to see what this data looks like next year. And what's interesting is our pre-K data was so phenomenal over the last couple of years. You know, it's just, and when you disaggregate by the source, you had to be really proud of our pre-K kids. And the kids coming out of Head Start were doing real well. And frankly, the kids coming out of private pre-K were doing real well. The group that lags most behind are the kids that have no experience in a program prior to entering kindergarten. And that gap, Ms. Boston, is pretty large.
Yeah, because this, to me, it puts up a red flag because I foresee this going down because of the early learning that some of these kids are not.
If we could keep it stable, I'll be happy.
I'm praying. Let's pray that it doesn't. My second question is, America's Choice. I thought that was phased out last year. So why are we still getting data for 2012 on America's Choice?
Yeah, so some schools are still using America's Choice, Ms. Boston. And it's a match in some of the grants. And so, some schools are still selecting America's Choice as an intervention. So that intervention, we're just measuring that against all other interventions. And that's what the purpose of this slide is. So that we can look at the toolkit schools, the comprehensive schools, and the schools that still use America's Choice to give us a comparison.
Because the data for the America's Choice seem to be a lot lower than the other toolbox and the other comprehension part that you're using. So are we going to eventually just phase it out altogether? Because it doesn't seem to be much growth in the.
I think that's the nature of the schools that are, I think what you have to do is disaggregate the schools that are actually using it. And you'll notice that those are the schools that had much more challenging populations. So the fact that they keep moving up, the score that surprises me, Ms. Boston, is the toolkit scores. Because toolkit is a pretty strong comprehension program. We have a lot of faith in it. And yet, our comprehensive students are actually doing a little bit better than the toolkit on the fast. So that's actually the one that's surprising me a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boston. Mr. Armwood?
Thank you. Ms. Boston hit on most of my concerns about the reasons for the decrease in performance. I was hearing words like refocusing, challenge, and a little dip, or on our way. I don't know if those terms are appropriate when we're looking at a decrease. And I don't know that we've really identified the reasons for the decrease. Pre-K may be one reason. But I'm really concerned about where we're going and exactly what we're going to do to get there. I'm also concerned because I understand Common Core will cause another decrease in scores during the conversion between that period of time when we have the implementation of the curriculum and the changing in testing. So how do we start preparing people for that and ourselves for that, for that matter?
So just a little bit of the statistical side of this. Each year that you look at kids, you're actually looking at a different cohort of kids. So you're not tracking the same cohort of kids. And when you look at the slope of the MMSR data, the slope is actually pretty consistent. What was really amazing was the jump that we had the previous year. So the fact that we had a huge growth in one year and a slight dip the following year doesn't particularly concern me because the overall slope over the last ten years is still moving in the right direction. You're absolutely correct about Common Core. Common Core is a complete game changer. And the items that we have that are most closely linked to Common Core are the items that our students are doing the weakest on. So, Mr. Armwood, I think you've absolutely predicted what we're seeing and that as that challenge goes way up, if we don't gear up for it, you're going to see a significant drop in scores.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Mr. Burrows?
Dr. Arbogast, Dr. Wyatt, I first want to thank you for this presentation. I believe that this is perhaps the best presentation that I've seen in my fifteen months here as an adult member, just because we're able to see the raw data, we're able to see the growth on this issue of student achievement. So I thank you so much for this presentation. Can you explain how do you calculate school readiness?
Well, the state gives us several domains for school readiness. We look at literacy, we look at mathematics, science. We look at their behaviors and skills. So there's an assessment, the Maryland Model of School Readiness Assessment that our kindergarteners take in the fall where we gather all of the data. We send it into the state, and then they disaggregate the data. And then, that tells us how we are doing.
So this is actually before, okay, so some of these students were not our students, not all these students had gone through pre-K. Some of them have, though.
Right, because these are kindergarteners. So some are our kindergarteners from pre-K, our pre-K program. Some are from home programs, some are from private pre-K, and some haven't been to any pre-K program.
I just noticed the growth. At first, we're in a thirtyth percentile, and then we're working towards an eightyth percentile. And that growth is absolutely remarkable. I can't imagine the work that our staff and our elementary schools have had to put in to achieve that. So thank you for that work. And on Slide five?
This one.
The percentage of first graders who are reading on and above grade level, you know, that's also impressive. And I want to thank the reading recovery teachers. I know we have one in the audience, Ms. Debbie Wood. I want to thank them and thank you for that new model of reading recovery that I was very, very skeptical about. But from what I hear, it's working out well. And it's increasing early literacy. And I really believe that within the next three years, we can definitely hit eighty percent. And that would be a very important goal to set and a very important goal to achieve.
Mr. Burrows, if I could just respond to that. We had an incredible professional development with principals about three weeks ago around guided reading. And guided reading, if you don't keep that plate spinning, it becomes very difficult. And it was our reading recovery teachers who were videotaped. And we showed the videotapes to our principals. And then, the principals had to analyze the instruction based on framework for teaching. It was stunning work of professional development. We were so amazed. And the principals brought a teacher with them. So the conversation was as rich as any I've heard since I've been in this district. So it's, I'm really feeling good about that piece.
You know, with this growth, it's absolutely important that we work to retain, you know, teachers and the principals that are most effective in doing this work. We absolutely appreciate that. Is there any plan for the administration to roll out something to really focus on retaining and incentivizing effective teaching and effective leaders, both teachers and principals?
I'll speak to that, Mr. Burrows, and thanks for that question. I think what we're attempting to do, and we have many of our partners who are here with us today, we are having conversations with all of our labor partners around compensation reform, particularly with the teachers and administrators, to look at how we can best structure a system that provides more opportunity to obtain and sustain those high-quality and highly-effective individuals in some of our most needy schools. And so, we want to look at various factors. But some things that Dr. Arbogast just described, like helping to develop other individuals. He used the example of the reading recovery teachers who do a presentation for principals and their teachers. So that's a part of leadership. So in compensation reform, attaching a value to that and attaching a value to our high-need schools. And I think that those are some of the things. schools. And I think that those are some of the things that we're attempt, we're attempting to do as we begin these conversations with, and labor partners, especially the teachers and leaders.
And I know I'm going to run out of time, but I think one of the things that you said was having our extremely effective teachers in our high-need schools. You know, we need them everywhere. But, you know, in my district, I have two schools that are in, two middle schools that are in corrective action. And so it's important to me and it's important to the community that we really begin to focus on those two schools and making sure that they have a highly skilled, highly effective teacher in every classroom there. Cool. Thank you.
Ms. Waller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's great to hear about our academic programs and the successes that we are having. My question and for discussion goes to how are our creative and performing arts classes and schedules interacting with the academic programs? As we all know, we hear how music, the arts, and being gifted in the arts contributes to a student's all-around well-being and for the success. But I haven't heard it interacted. And I know as we go to the six, seven, eight school models, the creative and performing arts programs are more entwined in the programs. And also, I'm thinking that it would affect their schedules. Could you all please address what is happening in that arena, please? Thank you.
Well, I'll start. In working with the creative arts team, which is also part of curriculum and instruction, as we look at Common Core, we've been trying to pull out those strategies that the team can incorporate into their curriculums to help support us. As we go to professional development, the creative arts team will also be members of our team. So Common Core has to be a whole-school effort. There, there are things that they can do to support us. And so as we begin to build everything out, they will be right there as our partner.
So as we are going, as the students are going to the seventh and eighth grade, the schedules are being allotted time for the various activities during the course of the school day? And what about arts in the elementary school? What's going on with art in the elementary school? Are we allowing time for our students to engage in arts activities?
We are. And one of the things that we are doing, because we, we know we don't have an art teacher for every school, schools are sharing art teachers. But we are working with the curriculum supervisors so that they can put art activities into the curriculum. And then we've launched a professional development program so that, you know, all teachers can give our students some art experience. And then I'm going to let Ms. Coley talk a little bit about the middle school scheduling, what's happening in that area.
As referenced previously, our middle school principals have been involved in training sessions throughout this school year on to better prepare a schedule that meets the needs of all students, through the regular core classes and through opportunities as well for intervention and enrichment. So that has been an ongoing training opportunity for our principals throughout this school year. And they are giving us really good feedback in terms of what it looks like for their schools. Now, what we're doing now is to create a structure for what that intervention period should look like, what that enrichment period should look like. So that is the next layer to the work of us providing those intervention and enrichment periods for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Ms. Higgins.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And while we can see what gains we're making, it's also very sobering about the number of children that we have that aren't able to read. How many children do we have in the third grade, approximately?
Just under, between 8,500 and 9,000.
9,000. Because if we're looking at on the chart number 11, and please correct me if I'm reading these charts wrong. And I pick third grade because I see our concentration in pre-K to second grade as focusing on the reading. So am I correct that we're saying that 65% of our children are proficient in reading in the third grade? Is that what that says? 64.7?
The way I would interpret that is 64.7 were proficient on that assessment. So...
Is that assessment a re, I guess I'm wondering where we are in terms of reading assessment?
It is, it is. It is a reading assessment, but...
So nine, 36%, of 9,000. I'm, I'm asking.
So the, so if you look at our MSA performance on third grade, it usually runs in the upper 70s. So this test actually scores lower than what we would normally see on MSA. The other thing, Ms. Higgins, is this is a test that reflects more of the Maryland State outcomes. So it's a broader span of reading. When we talk about literacy, we're generally talking about, the two assessments I want you to be thinking about are the DRAs and the SRIs, the Scholastic Reading Inventories. They're what I would call pure reading fluency tests.
Okay.
And these are much more engaged in the standards. So a question here might be about character analysis or main idea. Now, that's all part of reading. So, but it's, it's a broader swath of reading than what we normally think of as literacy and fluency.
So what, I, I certainly accept your knowledge of the, the different tests. The two that you said are more reflective of reading ability. Where are, say, our third graders? Do we have that information?
We, we do that in May. We do the SRI in May in third grade.
Uh huh. Do you anticipate it, I mean, I mean, we're saying maybe 30%, 20% to 30% of our third graders are, it would be safe to say, which is several thousand children. So if we're talking about that number of children who are not being successful in third, fourth, fifth grade in terms of reading, I, I'm asking you with all due respect and as professionals who are working as hard as you can, how can we as a system be responsive? Because we all know, everybody in this room knows what's going to happen to those kids if we can't get them up to, to reading. Now, math, I have to defer, I still use my fingers to count, and I'm not great with math, and I think I'm getting through. So my focus is really, you know, with all deference to math, really on the reading part in terms of what's going to happen to these kids.
So there are really two solutions, two responses to that. And that is to improve classroom teaching around differentiated instruction and around literacy. But the, the other piece that I've really been focused on this year is fidelity of interventions. So an intervention in, in the reading world today, they talk about tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions. And tier one is supportive reading for all students. And tier two is for a, a group of students. And then tier three is very, very intense reading intervention. And there are, you'll hear the term research-based programs. And the trick is to have the right research-based program matched to the child. And Prince George's County, in my view, has not been that strong in the fidelity to tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions. So we've put a lot of energy this year. And frankly, a lot of the funding is actually coming from the special ed side of the budget. But it needs to be on both sides of the budget as we, as we look at the training and the implementation of, of strong intervention programs. Programs like Read 180, Wilson, Lynda Mood Bell, corrective reading, Sword of Success. These are research-based programs that need to be tied directly to the diagnosed need of, of the student. And the, and schools need a menu of these options because kids have a menu of, of issues related to their reading. So...
So given our budget for, assuming that we don't get the draconian doomsday budget, which means we're all talking about something completely differently, but as soon, for our fiscal year 13 budget, what are, where are we in terms of being able to implement what you see as necessary to get more of our kids up to the level we need them to be?
It was really evident to us that we hadn't really created the infrastructure.
I'm sorry, what?
It was evident to us that we had not created the infrastructure for intervention. And, and the work that the associates have done this, this year, particularly Ms. Coley, around the scheduling module and the work that we're doing with Michael Reddick out of James Madison University, is really elevating the structure of schedule around interventions and enrichments. And that's not the way we've been building schedules. Usually build schedules for other reasons, other priorities. And, and what the associates have done this year is we're really taking the principals to understand that you start with your intervention first, and then you build your schedule around that. So that's the first step. Second step is to really look at the intervention data and hold schools accountable for that data. Just a week ago, I, we had some data that was not particularly strong around fidelity to program. And the associates were all over that. And they were working with their schools to say, look, we're buying these programs, so it's not a matter of expending the resources, it's using the resources with fidelity and, and with the level of priority that we think it, it needs.
So is, is, is what you're, some of what you're saying, then, is that it's a, it's a training, implementing the training purely? So it's intervention, and our, our financial situation is not impacting it?
You can always use more money. But we are not, we have not effectively used the resources that we've had. We haven't structured, we haven't scheduled, we haven't trained, and we haven't monitored to the level that we need to. And that's been really evident this year. So there's been a real focus. So we've actually done trainings around interventions with principals this year. The associates are really looking at the data, monitoring the data. And we've always had the training piece, but now we're just holding people accountable to implement tier two and tier three interventions to the fidelity that they need.
I think Ms. Coley's dying to say something.
And if I can add as well, our principals' meetings during this school year have been focused around professional development needs. And they're all specific to instructional strategies needed to ultimately improve student data. Our current structure as well with the instructional directors, from those opportunities of professional development, principals give us feedback in terms of what their next steps will be once they go back to their buildings. And from there, the instructional directors are there to support them with what the needs would be to ultimately get the data to where it should be. Our priority is to, in fact, your question a few moments ago is how do we prepare our students to be on grade level with respect to reading? That is a target, that is a metric that is required for all of our elementary schools. And we're not just looking at that data when students take a MSA. We're looking at that data throughout the course of the school year. Students take unit assessments, students are engaged in common assessments that have been developed by their teachers. So our conversations with principals is what does the data look like now? So ultimately, we do have students that are leaving us that are reading on grade level because we know the statistics and what research says. If a child is not reading on grade level by the time they reach fourth grade, there are problems. So we are on that with regard to provide, providing the professional development as Dr. Arbogast just referenced. Our principals were just recently engaged in a balanced literacy, professional development session. Our principals indicated to us that that's what they felt they needed. We worked collectively with curriculum and instruction, and we provided that opportunity for them where a teacher was there with them. So now that we've provided that professional development, then our instructional directors are working with the schools to ensure that what they've received the professional development on is actually getting back to the schools where it will make a difference for the students.
Okay. I'll do round two. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Johnson?
I, I have, I've been making notes. I want to go at this differently. Data is import, it's, it's valuable. I, I agree with that. But I also believe that you can spend so much time looking at data, numbers and charts and graphs. You don't see the child, the human, the class, the cohort of students. I'm not suggesting this is deliberate. I'm not suggesting it's not working hard. But I believe that exploration, experimentation, all of these are natural with curiosity, is how we support students to develop reading, math skills. Children are naturally curious. They're, they're natural learners. And different things have impacted their lives that are stumbling blocks, that are put there. And so I would say, what do we know? You talked about the readiness of students, several board members, but what do we actually know about the readiness of children in school, A, B, C, D, all of them? What do we know about the pre-knowledge that they have? Where did they get it? And how can we build on it? What do we know about the group of students that did so well two years ago? What do we know about them today? Are they maintaining that strength or declining? Or the students that two years ago showed a deficit, is that deficit still there? Have they moved at all by what we do? And back in the 70s, it was called cultural literacy. Today, it's called Common Core. Cultural literacy was that children, no matter where you lived in this country, we all learned the same thing. Now, I mean, they may not have been pretty, but we all knew how to evaluate editorial cartoons. We all took arithmetic, then we went to algebra, algebra two, geometry, and then right on to trigonometry. And that lasted all the way up into the 80s. Now, we have all of these variables. The work that you all have shown and what you're doing is tremendous. But for me, having spent so many years face-to-face with young people, it hurts and is harmful when we look at this data. Red means we had a decline, green means we went up a little. Children want to know where were they? What do I know? And can I compare it to a child two schools away or even a country away? While the TV is saying, America is now 24th on the planet in student learning, when we used to be number one. And so while I applaud the gains, I do, I know it's hard work. But I'm wondering, what do we know about whether or not this child is going to get there? And when do we know that child's going to get there? I, I just, I'm just very concerned about the data crunching. I, I'm just really concerned that we're so busy looking at these abstract scores. It represents children. What do we know about them? And how do we work to eliminate what we don't control? Mainly home, community, joy, curiosity. Sometimes their spirit is killed, right there in their own homes because nobody listens to them. So, thank you.
Ms. Johnson, had we been involved in that conversation about so many years ago, I would agree. The point now that we are prioritizing in all of our schools is to not just know the data and what the data represent, but who does that data belong to? When you know who the data belongs to, you're able to provide instructional practices that are tailored and identified for each child. So as I speak to school principals, school leaders, I look at the data and I say, okay, your data represents 50% or 41%. But who is represented in that data set? So our schools this year have as well designed data walls. Our principals are engaged in conversation with their administrative teams around who is represented and what does it represent, not just specific to elementary school. But the data wall has been a practice that we have explored this year at elementary, middle, and high. And we're having convers- And we're having conversations now and continuously, not just around what the data represents whole, but who and what students are a part of that data set. So instruction is to be provided to those students as a result of where they are with regard to data.
And if I could just, if you could put up slide sixteen, please. And slide sixteen is our conceptual framework. And we were very, I want you to look how we built this because it was very deliberate. What we said is we need to look at instruction through three lenses. And the very first lens is, Ms. Johnson, what you were talking about, is the learner. And how do we know that learner? And, and how we built this, we put the learner actually first. And we put the standard last. Because as we go into this, we, this is the slide I want you to look at, go back please.
Okay.
That's the slide I want you to look at. Because notice on the left-hand side, reading left to right, understanding the learner is just as high a priority as understanding the standard or understanding the practice. And our efforts around universal design for learning, how we're building our lesson planning, what we know about students has been elevated. So Ms. Coley is absolutely correct, we don't lose sight of that child. And we're actually collecting data in what you would normally call qualitative ways. So we're considering child attitudes, we're considering child's readiness to prepare for college. We're considering their metacognitive behaviors. How, how do those children construct knowledge and in what pathways? So, so I just wanted to let you know, we haven't, we haven't forgotten your theme and we've elevated it.
And I just wanted to add one point. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the collaboration between academics and student services. This year, more than ever, we've troubleshooted more problem situations to make sure that the students are supported, the families are supported, to keep the child learning. And so I, I think we are evolving to that cloak completely around the child to not only service them academically, but socially.
And that I thank you for. Perhaps we could have begun this with that support system articulated so that they, we would see, we, where the real focus is. It is so important because children have to have multiple supports in home, in the community, in the school. And some of our children come with nothing, and we have to try to build it for them, for them to be successful. And I don't think enough people realize how much we really do for children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I think the only area that I haven't really heard us talk more about is the reform, the specifics around reform at middle school. So I'm still getting inquiries from parents in the community about sort of how superintendent decided to make this decision around, so we know that middle school is struggling, we, we get that. But talk to parents where they are when they're saying, my kid is coming home very tired, exhausted. I can't help them with their homework because I don't get it either. So at the end of the day, we know we have to do something at the middle school level. And so what I'd like to hear is how the team came to the determination that the fix, if you will, or part of the fix would be to extend the day. And then in doing that, it kinda goes back to, if you're looking at the data, what about those parents who are saying, particularly if we're looking at it school by school, what about the parents who are saying, my kid doesn't need any additional time? What, what about that?
Dr. Whitehead, if I, if I may, thank you for that question, Madam Chair. And, and Ms. Johnson, this is gonna work into some of your question as well, I think. But, so part of this, Ms. Jacobs, is looking at, number one, our belief about students and, and what we think and believe philosophically that students need. And you've heard me say before, smart is something students become. And they become smart through effort. And having those efforts and making sure that individuals understand what some of those things are that are in response to what students need become very important. In other words, how can I ask students questions to understand their cognitive thought process behind that? So that's a different way to ask a question. And sometimes I can't get that if I'm giving a student a worksheet. Sometimes I have to let them talk because otherwise I don't understand their thinking. Now, as we begin to look at our days, not just in middle school, but across our system, here, here are some facts. We have the ninth shortest day in the state for all of our middle schools. And you know the challenges with their middle schools. We have an opportunity to extend that time for the purpose of providing more math instruction or reading instruction to our middle school students. Conversely, we also have, we also are able to use that time to provide more opportunities to expose students who are already successful in reading and math to more enrichment types of opportunities. We have two schools, middle schools right now, who use a zero period. That means parents are dropping the students off before the day begins just so those students can take an art class and a foreign language. And we, we wanted to have a structure that allowed that to occur during the school day for many of our students. And so that's why we looked at our middle schools because we felt like it is a place where because of the vast differences in the needs that are required, it, it's not a one-size-fits-all, but it's designed to be responsive to the needs of the learner. And so it's enrichment and intervention all together. And the schedule that is made so that it's the flexibility to do that. That's, that's one consideration. We also, however, need to begin looking as a system at our elementary day and our high school day. We have the shortest elementary school day in the state. We have the third shortest elementary school day, I'm sorry, high school day. We have the third shortest in the state. What does that mean? That means that some of our students are having to decide between a, a language class and a music class. And if they choose one, they cannot choose the other. And so that puts, that creates some challenges with, within our schools as we attempt to do the schedules. So one of the reasons we looked at the middle school day first is, number one, we had some time that we could use that was flexible. So that we had some time available at the middle school in order to extend that opportunity. The other part of that decision was it's because there's such a, a diverse set of needs at that, at that level. Students who need additional math help, students who need additional language help. We have requirements for science, we have requirements for PE. And all of those things suck time out of the school day. And so therefore, we wanted to look at that as an opportunity to provide those interventions and enrichment. So, but, but that's just a small component of the reform. The other part of the middle school reform work is really developing the skills of individuals who stand in front of students every day on how they can better connect with those students, how they can use not just assessment data, but all types of anecdotal data and embedded data where they get assessments from a student's response or get assessments from reviewing a, a student's work, a piece of student's work, in that they're able to provide some intervention or some support in response to that. And so that's the other part of this. And as, as Ms., as Dr. Arbogast explained earlier, it really becomes then also building in time so that teachers can talk to each other and reflect with each other about those things that work with students and quite frankly, those things that do not. And so that's why we looked at the middle school and trying to expand that part of the school day.
So will they still be able to have zero periods in those schools if they want? Or would that be eliminated?
We would hope we would solve this problem with that. But in some cases, individuals where they will be able to take a language class now, they may wanna, we may have schools that will say, okay, so now we wanna add orchestra class and, or whatever the case may be.
I guess what I, because I'm really trying to get to what it looks like for parents. I mean, they know what their typical day is now and, and what, you know, what would that day look like? And I think one of the responses that Dr. Arbogast had given at one point was that they were kinda, sort of decide at the school level. And I, I'd like to hear more about structure in terms of exactly what it looks like. You know, you start your school, you're gonna offer more courses, what does that mean for teachers? How does, you know, how does it impact staff? How does that, how does it work actually?
What I'm envisioning, and we're still working with our, our middle school principals on this because their needs are varied, but what we're looking at, Madam Chair, is that at some places, typically people would think about, okay, just add this amount of time to the class period. So we just divide the forty minutes by, the forty additional minutes by five periods, and then you just add that on. I don't think that really adds value. I don't think that adds value at all. So we would rather create another block of time, forty minutes, for the purpose of enriching or providing intervention. And so we would call that, we call it a skinny period because it's less than the time of a normal day, but it provides that extra time to enrich or to provide intervention or to provide other supports and, at, at the schools based on what those students need. So in some schools, so the forty minutes will look very similar at all schools. It will not, not anticipating it being an add-on to each day. I'm certainly not anticipating just making lunches forty minutes longer and then that's how we absorb the day. But this is a, a period that is added now for the purpose of providing students with those enrichment opportunities or interventions.
Okay, it's a very deep conversation that's continuing. It's nine o'clock. I think there were some who wanted to do round two, is that correct? Okay, I have Mr. Burrows.
Dr. Whitehead, you mentioned a writing program that you were developing and about to roll out. Can you explain that program?
Part of Common Core is to reinstitute writing. So when I say a writing program, that means we're going to be developing curriculum so that teachers can infuse more writing in, into what they're, they're doing to build our students' capacity. You'll notice that if you look in the Common Core, one of the things that it supports is writing with evidence. And it talks about, you know, making an argument with evidence. So that's what we are going to be building out as we revise to the Common Core.
That's, that's absolutely critical, and I'm not sure if that's an area that we're currently focusing on. I have a college assignment due tomorrow.
Okay.
Where I have to write with evidence, you know, science evidence. So this is definitely an area that I would like to, you know, see you guys work on because it's absolutely important. And also you mentioned the reform of math. Math.
Well, yes, we, we have kind of got to go back to the drawing board and kind of reexamine the things that we're doing to support our teachers in the field. So we have several partnerships. One is with the Institute for Learning to help us revise our curriculum units, provide professional development teachers, help teachers to analyze their student work so they can look to see, you know, what mistakes the students are making, how do we improve those? We just got a new grant with the University of Maryland that targets our elementary teachers. And previously, we had two grants with them that helped to work with our middle school teachers. So that's part of the effort around mathematics.
Absolutely, and it says a partnership with College Park?
Yes, that's the University of Maryland College Park.
Is that for all teachers or?
It's for, for, for any elementary teacher that wants to participate. The grant will support them in getting six graduate credit hours in mathematics. One class will be in content and another will be in just the strategies to deliver that content.
You know, that's absolutely important. You know, I personally don't care for math, but when I look at the top, you know, ten most unemployable college majors, not many of them are math-based. And so we absolutely have to focus on that.
Yes.
And I was talking to Dr. Urbowski, who's a math supporter the other day, and that's definitely an area that he wants us to focus on, especially with our minorities in the state. And my third question has to do with our interventions. I believe, Dr. Arbogast, you mentioned interventions when it comes to reading. Does special ed include, does special ed include 504s or just IEPs?
IEPs.
Not 504s? Okay. And are those interventions also at charter schools?
They should be. I mean, if they can, you know, ask for any intervention that, you know, we are currently using in the, in the system.
So they're able to access the same professional development?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burrows, just, what I said about special ed is that's where the funding comes. Actually, that is a set aside grant to help kids with literacy and numeracy so they don't have to be in special ed. So there's no qualification about whether you have 504 or a special ed or non-disabled to access interventions. Interventions are for all students.
Okay. And my last question deals with middle school, and I guess that's Ms. Coley. You know, a large part, on your middle school slide, you mentioned adolescent behaviors. And one of the ways to channel that adolescent behavior is working with mentoring groups. And I know that you're in the process of doing that. I would just ask that you concentrate on Thurgemarsh Middle School and Oxon Hill Middle. And, and, and every middle school.
Thank you.
But, you know, sincerely, I would appreciate if you focused on those. You know, mentoring is so important. And I'm reminded of that when I see my T-ball coach in the back, Mr. Green, Coach Green. So that's really important, and I would appreciate if you focused on that. Thank you.
Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to follow on with some of the comments that you made earlier. Parents are some of the most important stakeholders in a child's education. And this evening, we've sort of touched on it a little bit, we got the discussion going. We're talking about rigor for all of our students. But especially as our children, our students reach the middle school level, I can understand parents becoming frustrated because they don't understand what is happening. This evening, we've used several acronyms, we've talked about several things. I'm sure parents don't have a clue. And I think that it's important that we be sure to include parents as stakeholders. We're, we are lengthening the school day, and we're saying we're gonna use it for enrichment or, and/or intervention, those types of things. But at what point are we actually going to include our parents? Sometimes our parents are there working, and they're, they're, they're frustrated. Our parents are frustrated, I've been there. So I understand how you can get frustrated. And if you have a child and they are focused, you say, mm, that's wonderful. But sometimes our, all our children are not focused. And we, we go back to the way that we learned in school. And so there's a new parent out here today, their grandparents, and there are other family members that are helping the students and trying to help them achieve. What are we doing as a system to ensure that parents and family holders are truly stakeholders in our children's education?
One of the things we're gonna do with respect to our schedule, Ms. Waller, and as you know from being on the board and probably from being a parent in our system, in the past, we have had schedules that have been created for our students that go out right before the school year begins. This year, the, our students will have their schedules before they leave this school year. We're also gonna have information that goes out to parents within the next couple of weeks about bus routes. And it is, so those are things that are much earlier, as you As you know, air routing process, and bell times, by the way, because once we finalize that information, we're going to get that out to parents. But the whole point is to get that information out much earlier than we have in the past. And you know, as in the past, we've, we've been providing parents with the information about transportation and buses the week before school starts. So trying, so getting that information out much earlier so that there's ample time to make adjustments that take into account the additional time, especially at the middle school.
I've often said that our, our school system is like a giant puzzle, and there are so many pieces that go into this puzzle. And Dr. Height, certainly what you've mentioned are giant pieces of that puzzle of knowing what our students' schedules are going to be before school starts, and also because we're changing the bell times, what's happening with the bus schedule. And so this is certainly an opportunity that we, as a school system, we are being proactive. But this is also a chance for our parents and our communities to engage with us in a timely fashion to get the kinks out of those schedules and to know what we're doing with the bus schedule. So, I mean, I think that is so important that we have the parents and, as our stakeholders, but I'm, I am delighted to hear that we're really getting started on the changes that's going forth in such a timely fashion. And I hope that the community will certainly slow their schedules down and work with us when this information is rolled out in a couple of weeks. And in June, I'm sure we'll follow up and see where we are, Dr. Height, with everything going out. We have a lot going on. And again, this is a giant puzzle, and there are a lot of pieces that we have to keep going. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Just very quickly, if you could talk about, now we've built a strong student, we know with the support system. I'd like to know, how are we implementing the student ability and skill set to self-assess and to self-evaluate and to be able to do critical review of the what? Of the class? Of himself? Of a program? Of where they're going? How are we building those blocks in, starting in the very beginning, running all the way through? So I'm looking at, how can we recognize that students are really becoming strong self-assessors? They can be self-critical, and they can articulate about themselves as students and their needs?
Well, I'll let Ms. Lynch expound on this, but I think it all begins with the personal education plan that we have asked every child and their parents to develop. So this conversation begins very early on at kindergarten. And I think as we continue to have the conversations with parents after we've set the goals, targets, the, the achievements that the child wants to make, the, the college and career aspirations, that's how, you know, we can wrap our arms around the child. We've established advisory periods at the high school level, but we are now also establishing them at the middle school level. So we are putting to, in place, all of the pieces that we need to keep our hands on the child. And I think it's incumbent upon all departments to collaborate more, to make sure that we have all of the pieces in place.
And before you, before you start responding, Ms. Lynch? And Ms. Johnson, this is also, as we talk about instructional practices, really equipping many of our professionals, particularly around, particularly our teachers, with the skills to get to, get students talking about their work with each other. And I want to, I want to use an example. I was in a school yesterday, and at the school, it was an elementary school, it was Barack Obama, as a matter of fact. And it was, at the elementary school, I was in a class, and their objective for the day was to, and I think I'm going to get this right, was to form, students were to form I-wonder questions, and I learned statements about how insects and animals build their homes. And what is interesting is the extent to which we can start these behaviors early on. I think it's important because we want students to really begin asking themselves those types of questions. The class was a pre-kindergarten class. And so it's establishing those types of behaviors and making sure we build on those behaviors as our students work through school. So that, as I talked about earlier, if we're, we're trying to get at cognitive demand, we can't, we can't understand what a student is thinking cognitively if we're doing all the talking. And so we have to listen to students, talk to other students about that work, and then that becomes a process that's really an embedded assessment, if you will, inside of that learning activity. Ms. Lynch, I'm sorry.
No, Dr. Height, I think you've pretty much said it all, and I think Dr. Whitehead really elaborated on that point. I think also, Mrs. Waller pointed out that parents are, in fact, the best teachers, and making certain that we engage parents and involve them in the schools so that they can help their children express themselves as much as they can at home and in school is absolutely important. And I think that we are engaging in more programs and services that do that, and we're doing that at the middle school level. I think Dr. Whitehead was very kind when she pointed out that our areas of responsibility are working more closely together, and we're going to increase that work. We're doing more work with after-school activities, particularly at the middle school level. Our turnaround schools are doing a great deal in the afternoons with students to engage them in all types of activities that complement their academic and their learning skills and which bring parents into the school to help their children and so that they can pick up the skills that they need to work more with their children at home so that children become better at expressing themselves in a variety of ways. And I think if you get a chance to go to some of our schools, particularly in the afternoons, Drew Freeman is a great school to go to. They've got probably about thirty community services active there. We can actually see children learning how in the afternoons, not just tutorial, not just additional academic support, but they're learning to play chess, they're learning leadership skills, they're learning entrepreneurial skills. You've got all kinds of activities and opportunities that really help them figure out who they are and give them lots of exposure to things that they might not otherwise have.
Thank you. Ms. Higgins?
I just have two brief things I want to mention. I think as we're talking about education and the work that, that our teachers and our principals and our associate superintendents and staff are doing, I, I think it's very appropriate to mention last evening where we all celebrated wonderful teachers in the Teacher of the Year presentations who really showed their dedication, their commitment, and it was really enriching and invigorating to participate in that process and see the wonderful work being done by our staff. So I felt that since we're certainly talking about academics, we want to remember last evening as well. And then my other point is, my colleagues and I attended the National School Board Conference and certainly learned what people have already said, that we think that, that they're predicting that the Common Core program is going to reduce the test scores as people adjust to that system. Well, one of the presentations I saw, the mayor of San Antonio said that they were asking their citizens to pay seven dollars and seventy-nine cents a year in order to have all their income-eligible preschool children, be it a full day instead of it a half day. So, I mean, that was such a reasonable kind of, it's very, I would think fifty-one percent of the citizens, at least, would be willing to do that. And I don't know how practically we could follow that model, but it seemed very attractive and, and a reasonable way to get our kids from half-day back up to full-day. So, thank you.
So, thank you, Dr. Whitehead. Thank you, Ms. Colley, for the presentation, Dr. Arbogas, Dr. Height. So we know this clearly is a very important issue that will need continued dialogue as you, Dr. Height, sort of working with the principals, flesh out what, what it would look like for parents. And I think we're in, so we're, we're sort of winding down in terms of the number of scheduled board meetings for, for the rest of the school year. So I think it's going to be really important that we kind of include this as updates on agendas going forward so that we don't get through June, July, and then August not really know what's going on. So I think it's also worthy of noting that you cannot discount measured success. Our students have been very instrumental in demonstrating that. And so as we continue to look at measured success and then look at the reforms that we're talking about at the middle school level, I'm hopeful that we can really be able to identify the needs of the students and, and, and actually, you know, know exactly how that forty minutes is going to work for the kids.
All right. Having said that, that concludes the discussion item for this evening, and I yield back to you, Dr. Height, for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That brings us to items under seven point oh, Consent Agenda. There are nine items under Consent Agenda. I submit those to you at this time for your approval.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move to accept.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. It's been properly moved, the second that we accept Consent Agenda item under seven point oh. All in favor? Any abstentions or objections? Seeing none, motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item are, is one item under Budget Consent Agenda. It is the item eight point one, Public Charter School Approval or Facility Use Agreement for XL Academy Public Charter School. They will lease Matthew Henson Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, is there a motion? Thank you, Ms. Boston.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved, the second to accept Budget Consent Agenda item, item under eight point oh. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Okay, seeing none, motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have no items under unfinished business, so it brings us to eleven point oh, Old Business, eleven point one, the naming of the Charles Herbert Flowers High School Auditorium.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Ms. Harrison, procedurally, do we have to move to, move this off the table before we accept public comment, or can we move forward with public comment?
I think it would be best if the board first voted to move the item from the table and then entertain the public presentation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Armwood.
I move that we consider, move the resolution to rename the Charles Herbert Flowers Auditorium to the table for consideration and approval tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Boston.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second that we move from the table this item, which is naming of Charles Herbert Flowers High School Auditorium. We need two-thirds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion pass. Colleagues, we have eight registered speakers to speak on this item, which is entitled Old Business, item eleven point one, naming of Charles Herbert Flowers High School Auditorium. For our registered speakers, you must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. The board will not address your comments other than to, other than for clarification reasons and to correct any misinformation. At the sound of the buzzer, we ask that you complete the sentence that you are on only. You may not relinquish any of your speaking time to a registered or unregistered speaker. We ask that you use titles rather than names. Our first registered speaker is Shamie Outlay, eleventh grade student at Charles Herbert Flowers. Please come forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shamie Outlay, and I'm a junior at Charles Herbert Flowers Senior High School. Today, I'm here on the subject matter of honoring Ms. Helena Nobles Jones by naming the Charles Herbert Flowers Senior High School Auditorium after her in her honor, an honor in which I feel that she greatly deserves. In my opinion, she deserves this honor for several reasons. During my years at Flowers, Ms. Jones has been an advocate for both students, teachers, and parents. As a student, I appreciate Ms. Jones's legacy at Flowers High School of leading and moving our school forward during good and bad times. Since the school has opened, she has strived to make sure our school was a mecca of excellence. Ms. Jones is a principal, is a principal who is very hands-on and involved in the day-to-day operations of her students. She is available in response to both students and parents when there is a need. In other words, she is dedicated and dependable. In essence, I am in favor of the Charles Herbert Flowers High School being named in her honor. Also, the Student Government Association started a petition which reads, "As Mrs. Jones prepares to retire, the staff and students of Charles Herbert Flowers High School wish to recognize her lasting legacy by naming the auditorium in her, in her honor. Her hard work and dedication has led to the growth and success of Flowers High School." Your signature below states that you approve of this, and we have over five hundred signatures. Thank you.
Thank you. Maya Green? I'm going to call other names so that we can come one after the other. Marcus Neither. And Linda Arons.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Maya Green, and I am also a junior at Charles Herbert Flowers High School. Dedicated, caring, and loud, these are three words that describe our principal, Helena Nobles Jones, flawlessly. I am here today because the staff and students of Charles Herbert Flowers High School wish to recognize her lasting legacy by naming the auditorium in her honor. Her hard work, leadership, devotion, and no-nonsense attitude has led to the growth and success of Charles Herbert Flowers High School. She has mastered the arts of organization, great judgment, and discipline while she served as the head principal at Charles Herbert Flowers High School for the last twelve years, and for that, she deserves to be celebrated. The tough love that she shows her students never goes unappreciated because although at the time we may not like what she does, we know that in the end, her policies and guidelines are there to benefit us. In addition to that, it will make the students and staff of Charles Herbert Flowers so elated to be able to successfully name our auditorium after the incomparable Mrs. Jones. Because in our opinion, there is no one more fitting for the honor. She has done a phenomenal job running our school, and this is one small token that will warm the hearts of our school that we would like to offer her in return for helping us to succeed. We would love to send her off knowing that the place that she had the biggest hand in creating a mecca of excellence will never forget her or her legacy. Mrs. Jones is more than qualified for the dedication. She deserves it. On behalf of every student and every staff member, from the drama room to the third floor, we would like to say thank you for all you've done, and we hope that the school board will vote in our favor and help us to say thank you for, to someone who's changed our lives forever.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you. Marcus Neither. Linda Arons.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marcus Neither, and I'm a senior from Charles Herbert Flowers High School, also a proud player in the Jaguar Players Drama Club. I come tonight back with the alliance of members from the Jaguar Players, administrators, school officials, students, and parents. We're here today to give you guys the reasons why our auditorium should be named after our dear principal, Ms. Helena Nobles Jones, who was in the heart of our school and has been in service since its opening. First, let me start by saying that when a name is, when a building is named after someone, that person has to have some great reverence amongst his people, which Ms. Helena Nobles Jones does. She exemplifies that statement, and she exceeds expectation at constant. She works for the greater good and for the fairness of us, the student body. And it's no wonder why many students have taken a likeness to her. On behalf of myself and the Jaguar Players, I would even say that many of us have developed personal relationships with her. Ms. Jones has been there, and, and even with the upcoming retirement, she will continue to be there for us, and we know that down in our hearts. So we ask you guys today to give her her just due for her service and, and her support of the arts by naming the auditorium after her. When it comes down to it, we can think of no better person to receive this honor. And just a side note, if anyone was paying attention to the Fox Five News Report Live on Monday morning, Ms. Jones was right there beside us. Do it all. So this time, I would ask the Jaguar Players, administrators, and everyone on this issue to stand. We would like to thank you first and hope that you will come and visit in the future to the Charles Herbert Flowers High School Helena Nobles Jones Auditorium. Thank you.
Linda Arons. Mark Stevens.
I have a petition from the staff that I'm just going to put into the record, as well as a letter from alumni, who was my son, graduated class of oh-four. This is the story. Helena Nobles Jones spent forty-six years as an educator because she realized that she was required to give back, to give back to her family and a community that believed that although she was born poor, black, and female, she would never have an impoverished spirit. The great-granddaughter of enslaved people, she grew up to be the granddaughter and daughter of- of sharecroppers, people who worked hard to ensure that the promise of freedom would be fully realized by their family, a promise that could only be realized within education. Growing up in what she tells people they would consider a shack without the luxury of running water, in her home, she practiced the skill her parents insisted that she learned and loved by kerosene light. When in fifth grade, excited by her love of reading and learning, she was beside herself when the mobile library finally began traveling just a few miles from her home, and weekly she could take home an armful of books to read and explore the world. Who believed in this young girl? Her family and a community that included a teacher who saw her potential, nourished her spirit, and assured that there would be no obstacles to her furthering her education? Graduating valedictorian of her high school class with direction, hard work, a scholarship, and clothes generously purchased for her by a teacher she loved so that she would not feel less than anyone else she arrived on a college campus. She was the first in her family to do so, and while there, she continued to involve herself in the student activities she loved in her home school, student government, band, choir, basketball, drama, debate. But now, she also included bus rides, sit-ins, marches, and determined that the future would not be the past as it had been in the past for her people. Well, after numerous accolades and notable acclaim as an educator, the story continues. Twice retired, she determined that she would come to work where she lived, in Prince George's County. In this new high school, named for her humble Tuskegee Airmen, the great Charles Herbert Flowers, who lived within the community of the school, there she told for twelve years, creating a legacy that is unmatched. So when the story is told to students entering the doors of Charles Herbert Flowers High School next year and for decades to come, there was this principal who loved students, expected them always to do their best, was their cheerleader when they worked hard, disciplined them when they were wrong, grieved with them when they were hurt, and had no preconceptions about what they could accomplish because of what they looked like or where they lived, and understood that education was freedom. Yes, there was this strong woman who grew up to become a principal named Helena Nobles Jones, whose society would have counted out as a child. She was funny as well as deadly serious. She was a role model for young people. She made a difference in the lives of countless children she inspired and the staff she empowered to create the mecca of excellence. The auditorium is named in her honor. The baton, they will be told, is now in your hands. Thank you.
Mark Stevens. Clayton Arons. Chanel Ingram, please come forward. And Taylor Frazier.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Clayton Arons. I stand in awe with my colleagues, my wife, and administrators of Flowers High School and the students here in support of naming the auditorium for Ms. Jones. I am the parent also of two students who went to Charles Herbert Flowers, one of which was a board member, Omari Arons. I've known Ms. Jones for over eleven years now, and I first met her in my living room, actually, before the school even opened. Ms. Jones was very instrumental in helping to us form the PTSA at Flowers. She has been a solid rock, if you will. She's been a very dedicated, faithful servant. She has been a friend. She has been a mentor. She has done exceptional things throughout her tenure at Flowers High School. You're talking about a principal who attended every PTSA meeting, someone who attended every academic awards program, instituting programs, instituting a philosophy class for students that operated Dr. Height in the morning before regular class began in order to explore the minds of children, in order to develop them, in order to encourage them. This is an individual who has given above and beyond the call of duty. This is an individual who not only has given during the core hours of her work experience, but has given after hours, has given on the weekends. I can't begin to tell you the number of hours that she has toiled in that building and outside of that building with the students, traveling with them to academic meets, track meets, et cetera. This is an individual that you already know from your resolution, has spent over forty-five years in education. This is a woman who, when we think of that, that quote, that too much that is given, much is required, she personifies that. And for that reason, I join with everyone to support the naming of the auditorium at Charles Herbert Flowers High School in honor of Mrs. Jones. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. William Height, board members, and all other staff personnel. It is an honor for me to stand before you tonight to speak about a great woman, Mrs. Helena Nobles Jones. She is a phenomenal woman. I met Mrs. Jones in nineteen, many years ago, when she interviewed me as a first-year teacher in the District of Columbia School System. There is a saying, "If you're scared, say you're scared." Well, I was scared. But Mrs. Jones has a natural way of making you feel calm as well as confident. I was offered the job as a seventh-grade English teacher, and she began right away teaching the teacher. If I am a successful educator today, and I think I am, I owe it to Mrs. Jones. After leaving DCPS for PGCPs, I taught at both Robert R. Gray Elementary School and Eleanor Roosevelt High School prior to accepting a position as the drama teacher and director under, once again, the dynamic administratorship of Mrs. Helena Nobles Jones. Time does not permit me to adequately articulate both the personal and professional impact Mrs. Jones has had on so many humans and systems, that is, children, parents, adults, professionals, educators, administrators, school service technicians, and many more. Her career as an educator includes classroom teacher, dean of an all-girls school, principals of major school systems, assistant superintendent for the school system in our nation's capital, administrator in Baltimore City School System, and currently the first principal of a school characterized as a mecca of excellence, the Charles Herbert Flowers High School. When you are responsible for something new, you are responsible for setting and maintaining standards. Charles Herbert Flowers High School is known for its excellence in academics, sports, dramatic arts, and overall school reputation, to name a few. This must be credited to the one and only principal, Mrs. Jones. She is extremely intelligent, supportive, dedicated, and passionate about education and well-being of all of her students. Mrs. Jones supports dramatic arts not only as a standard within the county's curriculum, but she sees it as an effective tool for propelling students gifted in the arts to be a substantial and lucrative career. It is therefore a fitting that I stand before you on behalf of many of Flowers High School students and treating the PG Board of Education to tribute, honor, Mrs. Jones with a deserving monument by renaming the Charles Herbert Flowers High School Auditorium to the Helena Nobles Jones Auditorium. Personally, it would be an honor and a privilege for me to continue to teach and direct in the auditorium named for this great educator, mentor, and friend, Mrs. Helena Nobles Jones. Thank you, and the Jaguar Players would like to wish you love, peace, and...
Did I get everybody? So a little history, at the April twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven board meeting, the naming of the Charles Herbert Flowers Auditorium was posted on the agenda. It was posted as new business, first reader, and the item was tabled until a definitive date of retirement was given for Ms. Helena Nobles Jones to retire from Prince George's County Public School System. We now have that date. I think, Dr. Height, that is quite secure. I also want to thank our last speaker for explaining that you were... Did I miss someone?
Yes.
Okay, so I thought I called everybody name. What's your name?
Taylor Frazier.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, board members. My name is Taylor Frazier, and I am here to offer my opinion on the naming of the CH Flowers Auditorium. As a member of the graduating class of two thousand and six and a recipient of a principal's award from Helena Nobles Jones, I'm sadly here to say that I oppose naming the auditorium for her. Mrs. Waller mentioned that arts played a vital role in overall education, and as a student member of the National Association of Recording Arts and Sciences, which is also known as the Grammys, I also value arts education. Most county schools lack components necessary to prepare students for collegiate arts programs. I spent all twelve years of my matriculation in choir and honors choir, and was shocked to find I hadn't been prepared for music voice auditions required by most colleges. It seems to have become a trend to lobby for schools being named after county residents. Since her inception, Principal Jones has strived to achieve a mecca of excellence. As a student who spent time in both science and tech programs, and later as a traditional student, I can speak from both viewpoints. I was offered over five hundred thousand dollars in scholarships funds, including a full scholarship to the University of New England for marine biology, which I chose to pursue instead of music because I could not matriculate at a college of music program. Principal Jones values special programs over the everyday student. At this very moment, CH Flowers homepage on the PGCPs website, you can find a photo titled "Some of Principal Jones's Favorites." Favoritism is what is leading to the demise of educational standards in county schools. Favorite students can appeal to teachers and principals for grade changes, promotion to the next grade level, special privileges during regular school hours, and access to non-student areas. Principal Jones should be allowed to have favorites, but favoritism creates disparity between students. She has been an iconic principal, but naming an auditorium is not the way to validate her achievements. It is my suggestion to the board that naming the auditorium be left to a benefactor, someone who makes a valuable financial donation, which CH Flowers is desperately in need of. I, myself, donated Final Cut Pro to the television production program so that students after me would be able to be prepared for college TV production programs and have access to software that they greatly need experience in before attending a major college. Institutions around the world have decided not to give something for nothing. With under fifteen thousand dollars spent on average per pupil in the county, it's clear more money is needed to aid arts programs and overall enrichment. Alumni make contrib... I'm sorry. Alumni make contributions to have plaques on walls, halls named in their honor, and even bricks on sidewalks. This fundraising effort would be more beneficial to students than having a legacy left without future benefit. I'm not here to badmouth Principal Jones, but I feel there are more appropriate options. We have several stars that graduated from county public schools, Taraji P. Henson, Martin Lawrence, Maya, and I feel that we should reach out to those people. Auditoriums are typically used for arts, so why not have them named after someone in the arts? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Colleagues, that concludes public comment with regard to item eleven point oh, which was submitted as old business, and procedurally, just wanted to make sure I'm gonna recognize Ms. Eubanks, who is a board member representing that district and that, the school that lies in that district. But procedurally, Ms. Harrison, I just wanna make sure I'll entertain a motion from colleagues. Does it procedurally have to be treated as a first reader because it was moved from the table that way?
Yes, it was on the prior agenda as a first reader, so now that it's been taken off the table, it is a first reader that the board needs to vote on.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Eubanks, Chair recognizes you for a motion on how to treat this matter.
I make a motion, and I'm honored to move for approval for the naming of the CHF Auditorium after Principal Helena Nobles Jones for her twelve years of service at a school named after an African-American hero, Charles Herbert Flowers. She is tough but fair. That's what I've seen and I've heard from others over and over again. She has transformed education and demanded excellence, the mecca of excellence. She deserves this recognition.
Okay, that's... The motion is to... Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. The motion is for approval to treat this as a first reader and second by Mr. Armwood. And that means that we will put it on the next agenda as a second reader. Thank you, Ms. Harrison, for that clarification. And Ms. Dent, call the roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood.
Aye.
Ms. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Ms. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson. Ms. Waller.
Aye.
Ms. Higgins.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So procedurally, for, particularly for the drama group back there, what that means is that the item has been approved as a first reader. It will, it will appear again on a board agenda, probably the next one is May sixteenth, and that means it'll be on as a second reader, which means that there, there could be more discussion among board members around the issue and then a final vote procedurally, just so you know what that, what that means. And I was, what I was about to say was, thank you for describing the fact that you were with the drama club, because I would've had to explain to my colleagues, at least one or two of them, the reason for the big hair. And that probably would be the vice chair, Ms. Higgins. So, thank you very much for your patience and for coming out and supporting this issue. Dr. Height, I believe that brings us to public comment on non-agenda items, and I would ask that while, as you're, as you're leaving, we do have additional public speakers, so we're gonna have, we're gonna be calling other people up. Colleagues, it is my understanding that our next group of speakers, although it is public comment on non-agenda items, if you would notice, they are, for the most part, students who are from Elizabeth Seaton High School, and I just wanted to note it, note for the record, and perhaps they can take this back to their instructors, that part of your grade should be included for the time that you've sat here and waited until your, your chance to speak. That being said, the first person on the list here is Rachel Hager, a twelfth-grade student at Elizabeth Seaton High School. Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Rachel Hager, and I go to Elizabeth Seaton High School. My classmates, Nige Chelsea, have come to talk to you about keeping art programs within schools. My school especially is cutting part of the programs in schools this year, and we just wanna preserve them because we feel very passionate about this topic.
We have come to the PG County Board meeting to discuss making changes to the amount of funding given to art programs in schools, and many school sports programs are given higher priority and care than art programs despite research showing that they are both useful and students becoming well-rounded. Art programs are also shown to increase the students' math and science scores because art helps strengthen abstract thinking skills. We think it is vitally important that kids not only be physically challenged with sport programs, but also creatively stimulated. Our programs act, also act as healthy proactive outlet for kids who are more creatively focused. So we are proposing that you make art programs as equally funded as sport programs in schools. Although sports programs do offer scholarship money and funding for schools, our programs foster the same benefit. We are proposing not to limit the athletic programs in schools, but to maintain and give the same attention to our programs such as drawing, painting, and graphic design. Please don't limit our kids, our kids' rights to creativity.
And what's your name?
Chelsea Stevens.
Chelsea Stevens, okay. So Ms. Hager and Ms. Stevens, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is...
Isn't this for an assignment?
Oh, yes, yes.
You get an A.
Asata was also our partner.
Tell them we said you get an A.
Okay, is Asata Terrell here?
Oh, she was unable to attend.
Jessica McCullough? Okay. Jocelyn Ford, please come forward, ma'am.
Oh, good evening. I've come to discuss the, an increase in salaries for PG County Public School Teachers. Good evening. My name is Jessica McCullough. I'm sixteen years old and a graduating senior at Elizabeth Seaton High School in Blainsburg, Maryland. I will soon be attending the University of Maryland Baltimore County and to pursue my academic goal to become a mathematics teacher in the PG County, Maryland area. My career goal is to teach in high-needs schools where students from low-income or disadvantaged environments have academic needs. I desire to give back to young children who are academically failing or not excelling to their full potential. However, it is surprising when I share my desire with other classmates, friends, and even adults. Their first response is not to congratulate my career choice, but to ask, "Why? You're not gonna make any money." To me, teaching is the seed, the root, the backbone, the beginning for many individuals who have ever achieved anything. But our society appears to recognize teachers by their low standards, by their low salaries or the amount of money they make, as opposed to respecting the profession and knowing the value of being an educator. It is imperative that we improve the salaries of our teachers and increase their incomes from the bottom of the list to the top. Teachers deserve to receive... Teachers deserve to receive excellent compensation that represents the dedication and hard work it takes to educate our children who will soon be the future. It is important to understand that although students may have the interest in becoming a teacher, many frown upon the career because the salaries are not inviting and not in a financial bracket conducive to the present and ever-growing cost of living. Please consider continuously keeping the conversation of higher salaries for teachers on the table for open and fresh discussion until a change is made. I thank you for your time and consideration in this matter and may God richly bless you as you continue to work to improve the PG County Public School System. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. Jocelyn Ford.
Good evening. I'm here to address the Prince George's County School Board on behalf of my child. I'm standing here because I would like for you to stop contracting buses. Because we had a bus service and I felt that it was inexcusable for this bus company to have their buses, to have this bus put out of service by the state because it couldn't pass inspection. And Prince George's County School System had to provide backup service for this particular school because these were our students. And we are the parents that pay taxes and we pay for this bus service. If we have to pay bus service, I will gladly pay it to the county to provide safe transportation for my child that attends Chesapeake Math and IT that is located in Laurel, Maryland. Because if we want our children to attend schools, we should, if we are able to pick the schools they go to, we should be able to pay for the school and have our children to arrive on safe buses. And I feel that Prince George's County workers, bus drivers, trainers, they do an excellent job with our children. They, the first persons to see them in the morning and last to see them in the evening. I feel that they, if given the opportunity, they'll be able to do everything to provide a education for our children and provide us excellent service towards our children. And in closing, because it really bothers me, my child on buses that breaks down, and he told me about his bus breaking down at least about ten times and being marked tardy going to school. And I know on our county buses, we have a fleet of excellent mechanics that prepare our buses, that we get inspected three times a year. And it's just unexcusable for this company to do this to these children. I just want to let you know, thank you very much for hearing me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. And so, on behalf of the board, we'll be asking Dr. Height to provide an update on, on this matter and, let's see, today's Thursday.
I can provide you one right now, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And so, the, this is a charter, part of the charter agreement with Chesapeake Math and IT Charter School up in Laurel. They've been having, as the parent described, significant problems with the transportation service that they have contracted with. As a result, they have failed the inspection of the, of the fleet that was transporting the students. So, the district is now providing the transportation for that school and then charging the, the charter school for the cost of that transportation. So, we don't foresee at least that company supplying the transportation service for the remainder of the year, and we're working with that charter school to work out an agreement for this as we move forward. But this was in, well within the charter agreement that they signed, they wanted to provide their own transportation. We allowed them to do that, but then they started having these problems. So, we asked for an inspection, state came and inspected. They were not successful through that inspection, so therefore we now provide the transportation. I think that, I believe that began this week, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Begined this week.
Thank you, Dr. Height, for that update. Shirley Adams. Local twenty-two fifty.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board Members. I bring greetings to you from ASAFSMI Local twenty-two fifty as the local president. I'm asking that you strongly consider the services that we as ESPs contribute to the quality education of all of our students. We as school bus drivers, bus attendants, central garage employees, maintenance employees, school nurses, food services, secretaries, security, paraprofessional educators and school administration employees in reference to this year's school board budget cuts. We have been doing a lot more with a lot less, and with any additional cuts, it will be impossible to continue the quality of service that we provide on a day-to-day basis. We truly take pride in the services we provide. Thank you for the opportunity to leave with you this evening a video of how great public schools begin and end with ESPs. We urge you to take a moment to view this video titled "A Day Without ESPs." We would greatly appreciate the opportunity for this video to be shown at your next scheduled school board meeting. I look forward to hearing back from you whether or not our video will be approved to be shown at the next school board meeting. In solidarity, thank you so much, President Shirley Adams, ASAFSMI Local twenty-two fifty.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. And Mr. Coleman, you have the video? Okay, so if you'll make sure that we have that available in the board office so that colleagues can all view it. And then we'll provide the response. Okay, that concludes public comment for this evening. Dr. Height, colleagues, let's just make sure there's no further business. Any questions on no follow-up items? And so, I, Ms. Higgins, if you will please give us a motion regarding executive session.
You probably didn't recognize me because I didn't have big hair. I move that we adopt board action taken during the executive session on administrative appointments, all employees acting in interim listing, employee appeals and legal matters.
Second.
It's been properly moved as second that the board adopt items, adopt actions taken in executive session. It's been properly moved as second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? All right. Any objections or abstentions? Motion passed. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.